All right, all right. So trustee Church, I heard from you a moment ago, so I know you can hear us. We know that you are otherwise engaged, so thank you so much for joining us virtually. And all right, everyone. It is 2:01 PM on this Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, and this is the regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And clerk Rodriguez, can you please read a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Trustee Church.
Here.
Vice President Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
I'm here. President Smith.
Here.
Trustee Westlake.
Here.
Trustee Woodley.
Here.
And our student representative will be here momentarily, ma'am. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Yes, our student representative is just finishing seventh period, and she will be with us shortly. So it is a very special day, and so there is a very special person who will be leading us in the pledge. She is a nearly 23-year veteran of the Washoe County School District. She started at Bernice Matthews Elementary School and Glenn Duncan as an after-school program coordinator. She joined HR, also helped with our reading programs, and has been a member of our communications team. She is a near-constant supporter of this board, 24/7, community requests, messaging, presentations, engagements, all of that work. And she's one of the people whose hard work allows us to do our best work for our kids and the community. So Jen Caldwell, will you please lead us in today's pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and now we'll move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nu'umu, Northern Paiute, Ni'wi, Western Shoshone, and Nu'wu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. So that closes item 1.04 and section 1 in its entirety, and we'll move on now to section 2. These are our consent agenda items. And today, we have agenda items 2.02 to 2.16. I have not been contacted in advance by any trustees wishing to pull any items. I don't see any lights on now. So JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.02 to 2.16?
John Appolito for item 2.13.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito. You can find 1,500 of us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. Over the last 20 years, I've had four kids go through the district, and I'm a former K-12 teacher. These three articles are for you guys. Titles: This New York Times, April 2024, "Every Tech Tool in Classroom Should Be Ruthlessly Evaluated." Washington Post, November 2021, "COVID-19 Brought New Technology Into Elementary School: It's Time to Remove It." New York Times, April 24, "Get Tech Out of the Classroom Now Before It's Too Late." Katie Simon-Holland sent me the last one, and she said something like, "Everything you've been saying for years is true." My response was, "Yes, I know, but what can we do about it now?" Today, you will give another $136,000 to School City. The district has 70 to 80 people in the IT department, but here's what's not in your board packet. In 2018, a private equity firm merged five large ed tech companies, including School Cities, into one firm, Illuminate. In 2022, the New York Times reported, "Illuminate Had a Huge Data Breach." After the data breach, Illuminate sold the entire large company, including School City, to Renaissance Learning. I'm pretty sure you guys were using School City in 2022 during the data breach. I'm not sure if School City and/or WCSD was affected by the data breach. Beth, is it possible to see if School City has already breached our children's data before you vote to give them another $136,000? Even if the answer is no, what would it take, or is it already too late, to simply go back to educating children, not sticking them in front of screens? Initially, ed tech software was free to school districts. All districts had to do was give the firms all the student data they asked for and all the schoolwork the students created to firms like Edmodo, who created rich student profiles on our children. Recall, the Chinese bought Edmodo, including the student profiles. Now these private equity and ed tech vendors are charging and still creating student profiles on the data they're stealing from our children. I understand it's slightly abstract, but the reason I keep coming here is because in the near future, it is very likely student profiles created by these vendors will affect what our graduates can do in their futures, i.e. college, employment, internships, government jobs, military, et cetera. I haven't seen any evidence that the district or any of you are even attempting to protect the future of our graduates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome. I asked the question. I don't know if you can answer it.
That's all I have for this item.
If there's been a data breach.
Thank you. We can definitely look into whether or not WCSD was affected by that. So I'll definitely ask that question. We haven't pulled the item, so the item isn't being pulled. It's being with everything. All right. Is there any other? Oh, I'm sorry, JJ, you already said that there's no other public comment. Thank you so much. Okay. Trustee Woodley.
Yes, ma'am. President, I'm ready to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.16.
All right, so we have a motion by trustee Woodley, seconded by clerk Rodriguez. Seeing no lights on or hands up, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. So that closes section 2 and the consent agenda items. And now we'll move on to section 3, our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we will begin now with item 3.01. This is the presentation and discussion of a Washoe County School District proclamation honoring Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we are very pleased to have with us today Ms. Lenisha Battle, our Director of Diversity and Equity, and Katie Louise Weir, our interim Chief Talent Officer. I don't see Lenisha, though.
All right, good afternoon. Lenisha actually got called to support a family and a school. So, but we are excited to continue a tradition that we've done here at Washoe County School District to recognize many of our students, families, and community members we serve who are valuable parts of our Washoe County School District family and team. And I'm very proud of the work that Lenisha and her team do to recognize and support all students and staff within our system. And I'm excited to recognize this important group of our community today.
Oh, all right. So for today's proclamation, we have invited trustee Colleen Westlake, who will be reading the proclamation on behalf of interim superintendent, Dr. Kristin McNeil.
Thank you, President Smith. Whereas, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an opportunity for all members of our community to recognize the contributions and achievements of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders in our nation's history. And whereas, the Washoe County School District includes more than 3,400 students and families and more than 250 staff members who identify as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander in our school-community system. And whereas, the rich and diverse cultural heritage of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders is woven into the fabric of our society, contributing to the strength and vibrancy of our nation. And whereas, throughout our history, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have made significant contributions to various fields, including arts, sciences, politics, business, education, and more, enriching our collective experiences and advancing our society. And whereas, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month provides an opportunity for the Washoe County School District to celebrate the diverse cultures, traditions, and histories of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and to promote a deeper understanding and appreciation of their contributions among our students, families, staff, and community. Now, therefore, I, Kristin McNeil, interim superintendent of the Washoe County School District, do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of May as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourage all members of our community to engage in activities and events that intentionally and authentically celebrate the heritage, culture, and achievements of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders.
Thank you very much. Trustee Church, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I just wanted to support that. And I wanted to mention that I've had the opportunity to travel extensively throughout Asia, including China, Japan, Philippines, and many other Southeast Asian countries, some of which were mandatory by my Uncle Sam, but I'm glad we went. And so I absolutely support this. I do want to kind of comment that I hope that we update our reflection journal that's just four years old to reflect those contributions well. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you all so much, and thank you for that lovely reading, trustee Westlake. We appreciate that. All right, that closes item 3.01 and brings us now to item 3.02. This is the approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price I, also known as GMP1, from Clark Sullivan Construction as the construction manager at RISK, also known as CMAR, for E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, the replacement project in the amount of $94,677,079, and an owner's contingency in the amount of $3,757,989, for a total amount of $98,435,068, and approval of Washoe County School District's owner/CMAR construction agreement. This is an item for possible action, and we welcome Tammy Zimmerman, our chief facilities management officer. Welcome, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you for having me today. For the record, my name is Tammy Zimmerman. I'm the chief facilities management officer, and I'm really excited to bring our first project out of the facility modernization plan to you to move on to construction. So to give you a little background, we started design, and design funding was approved in December of 2022. TSK Architects finished the design in January of 2024. We then put it on the street to bid with our CMAR construction manager at RISK, Clark &amp; Sullivan. It's a two-phase project. The first phase is actually constructing the new building on the existing fields and demoing just a small part of it so that we can make that all work. And then the second phase, which you'll see later, is demolishing the existing building that they're currently living in and then building fields on that property. So this is guaranteed maximum price number one. You'll see another one coming as soon as we get to that phase. But capital funding approved, the construction phase funding of this in February of 2024, and you guys approved their recommendation. So we moved on to actually bidding it with Clark &amp; Sullivan, who was our CMAR. The project generated a lot of interest in the community. We received 143 RFIs from subcontractors to the general contractor and answered those. They, Clark &amp; Sullivan conducted the bid opening on March 26th of 2024. The district was in attendance to watch them open those bids, as per NRS 338. Seventy-six percent of the subcontractors are local on this project, based off of our guaranteed maximum price we have. It's scheduled to begin June 10th of 2024 and completion May 18th of 2026. So that's so we can load the building and do some training and get everybody in and situated before school starts. So today, we're asking the board to approve this guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $98,435,068. Now, our estimate for that, I just want to say, was $98.5 million. So we're right there, right on target. And so we're super excited to bring this to you. We will have groundbreaking May 24th. You guys should receive invitations so we can do that ceremonial activity out there. And we're just super excited to kick off our facility modernization plan.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that. Seeing no lights on or immediate follow-up questions, trustee Woodley.
Just a quick question. Did I hear correctly? The estimate was $98.5 million, and it came in at $98.435?
That's correct.
That's amazing.
That's what happens when you have partners in the community and a CMAR that help you estimate that along the way and look at the plans with you. That's why that process is so valuable to us.
Trustee Church.
A couple of quick comments. I am in favor of this. It is much higher than previous middle schools that we built from the ground up. But in looking over the paperwork, of course, this includes demolition. Labor costs have gone up, and we're paying prevailing fair wages to our hard-working employees who do that to the trades and the trades, as well as the fact that insurance has gone way up, as I saw in the proposal. So at first, I was a little taken aback that the cost went up higher than the other schools, but in review, I'm in favor of it.
Fantastic. I'm seeing no other questions. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. Well, then I will bring it back to the dais for further discussion or potentially a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm ready to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Guaranteed Maximum Price I from Clark Sullivan Construction as the construction manager at RISK, number 23-41-C-02-AS E. Otis Vaughn Middle School replacement project in the amount of $94,677,079, and an owner's contingency in the amount of $3,757,989, for a total of $98,435,068, and approves the Washoe County School District's owner/CMAR construction agreement.
All right, so we have a motion by trustee Woodley, seconded by Vice President Mayberry. And seeing no lights on or hands for further discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. That closes item 3.02 and now brings us to item 3.03, our showstopper for today. And of course, I'd like to welcome everyone who's also watching online, because we do have our live stream available on YouTube. So whether you are with us in person or whether you are watching us online, we very much appreciate you being with us. And just as a reminder to anyone who may be watching at home, it is not too late to provide public comment on this item. You can reach the entire board at publiccomments@washoeschools.net. We will be taking a pause in order to read all emails after the public comment to ensure that all messages that come to this board on this item are read before there is any discussion and potential action. So on that note, we'll go ahead and we will open item 3.03. This is the discussion and possible action to select a superintendent of schools for the Washoe County School District from among the following five finalists: Joseph M. Ernst, Elizabeth Fagan, Paul Lamarka, Charles McNulty, and Troy Parks. As part of the discussion, the board may consider the character, competence, or alleged misconduct of Joseph M. Ernst, Elizabeth Fagan, Paul Lamarka, Charles McNulty, and Troy Parks. This is an item for possible action. And we do have some of the support people that have been with us every step of the way in the audience. They're not coming up for any presentation at the moment, but we do have available to us our interim chief talent officer, Katie Louise Weir, and from McPherson &amp; Jacobson, Dr. Walt Cooper. So now, as we go ahead and open this item, our board has had an opportunity to be heard through its questions, also to speak with many community members. Before we share any thoughts of our own or potentially enter into what may be considered to be substantive deliberations, I do believe the most important thing is to hear from our public first. So in this case, I would like to open this item with public comment.
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
Valerie Fianaca for the record, and I'm going to make it short and sweet. I have a $100 bet on this because Beth Smith told one of our county commissioners, who was already chosen before this even opened. So I'm betting on that $100, because I have a dinner date planned tonight, and I hope I win. Thank you.
I would like to state for the record that is not true. And who's our next speaker?
Sandy Tibbet.
Welcome, Ms. Tibbet.
Good afternoon. Sandy Tibbet for the record. So do you remember during the November 2023 meeting when Enfield tried to complete her part of the deal by creating a new permanent chief of schools position for Troy Parks prior to her leaving, resigning and leaving? Remember that? I know you do. And remember how that agenda item was mixed in with all the other consent items? In an attempt to approve it without any of you discussing it? Yeah, I remember it vividly. Well, it didn't get approved, yeah. So here we are at the end of the charade in the superintendent's search, because we all know who it's going to be. So October 2022, RFP was opened, and there were six proposals for a new strategic plan received. And then a four-person committee was formed to evaluate and score these six proposals. There's the deputy superintendent, chief communications and community engagement officer, chief financial officer, and our current chief academic officer, Troy Parks. Those are the four that made up the committee. On 10/26/2022, the committee met to review and select the two finalists. We all know Bellwether and Performance Fact. They did presentations and interviews of the two finalists were conducted on 11/3/2022, with the committee scoring the two finalists and making their recommendation to move forward with the contract with Performance Fact, which is the same company Highline School District used for their strategic plan back in 2013, which is the same school district Enfield came from. Shocking! 12/11/23 and 2/23, I did public records requests for the minutes and the scorecards worksheets from those two meetings. And I was told from the general counsel's office, there were no minutes from either meeting, and the individual scorecards and worksheets did not meet the definition of a public record, even though this board made public the scorecard and worksheet tabulations for Bellwether and Performance Fact at the 12/22 meeting. Why so much transparency while conducting a superintendent search, but no transparency when selecting the company who will provide the district a highly important and expensive strategic plan that's supposed to pave a $10 million path to our students' success? Maybe Troy Parks can tell us why the committee accepted and approved a contract with Performance Fact when the company failed to complete and sign the public disclosure form that was required by all who submitted the proposals?
Thank you very much, Ms. Tibbet.
Probably not.
Joni Hammond.
Welcome, Ms. Hammond.
Good afternoon. I'm Joni Hammond. I see we have on the agenda today an item to hire a new superintendent. I think it's fascinating that one of the candidates has a title of, make sure it's correct, Chief Continuous Improvement Officer. Could one of you please tell me what has improved at Washoe County schools? We remain in 50th place out of 50 states. Another of the five candidates has the title of Chief Student and Family Supports Officer. Could someone tell me how Washoe County schools have improved in safety or increased attendance by having this candidate? I do not see why either of these people are in the final five. What have they shown to garner that? If nothing has improved in their watch by now, why would we expect improvement if they get the superintendent position? I continue to attend these meetings. We spend millions and millions of dollars, but we do not seem to spend any time on improving safety, improving attendance, or improving the ability of these children to be able to function in life.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hammond.
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
Hi, John Appolito with Protect Nevada Children. At the superintendent forum at Worcester a couple of weeks ago, there was a question asked of all the superintendent candidates. And the question was this, quote, "When it comes to collecting, storing, and sharing student personal information, data, and schoolwork, Nevada is one of the worst states in the country. We have two massive databases that collect, store, and share student discipline, medical counseling, and psychiatric data. Infinite campus insane. The data is never deleted in either database. Do any of you have concerns how all this stored data may affect the future of our children?" End quote. I bet you can guess who that was from. Two of the candidates, at the end of that question, said, yes, they are concerned. But that was Paul and Troy. But both of them went on to blah, 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 we follow FERPA. Nobody addressed the real issue. The issue is just the fact that these databases exist forever. How is that going to negatively affect the future of our children? That's what we should be talking about. None of the five super, after the meeting, someone came up to me and said, I know that was your question. And then she said, did any of the candidates address the issue? And I said, no, not one of them. And that's the way it's always been here in Washoe County. Other districts, it's different. Other districts are starting to wake up. We're not one of them, and you guys are the reason why. We could have discussions here. I could help you. The legislative session's coming up. I'll be there. I'll be trying to do things. Maybe Washoe County will be the only one fighting me again. Maybe they won't. It'd be good if we were on the same team this time. I emailed you guys this a little while ago, I believe. This is an NPR story, and the audio is different, slightly different. The audio is better than the article, but here's a copy of the article. This is from March 2024. Hackers are targeting a sup- Hackers are targeting a surprising group of people, young public school students. And I know, Joe, you don't really care about this. You're not interested. It would be nice if you could at least look up and pretend like you're interested. It's very disrespectful, Joe. I wouldn't do that to you, and I don't know what you're running for next, but... And parents who want to see what data is currently being stored on their children in infinite campus forever can go to protectnevadach children.org. Talks about infinite campus. Toward the bottom of that webpage, there's a link. Actually, the link just goes right back to Washoe County School District because that's where you have to... And I think it's a third party, maybe. I haven't looked in a little while. But at that link, you can get a printout. You can download it and then get a printout of all the data that'll be stored on your kid forever in infinite campus.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
Roger Edwards.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Good afternoon, Roger Edwards for the record. So I can't believe this item came out with these, three of these five people as finalists. These three, three of the former present members of this administration have over 20 years of involvement with Washoe County schools and are a major part of where Washoe County schools are. And I can't believe you would consider any of the former people that are responsible for where Washoe County schools rank today to be thought of as possible managers of this county going forward. Come on, people. These guys, even though they were complaining about the quality of education, between the three of them, they could have changed it even without you guys' participation, but they didn't. So now we've got three of the administrators who I would say are responsible, are partially responsible for our status as the worst in the country, being considered for superintendent. It's mind-boggling, folks. Come on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards.
The board received emails from Kimberly Garman, Nisa Butler, Wiley Evanson, Kim Vidani, and Don Gerhart.
Thank you so much. So we're going to do something that's a bit unusual right now because it's much earlier than before we do this, but I do not want us to enter into any substantive conversation without the voice of our student representative who is on her way here from school at the moment. So thank you so much for all of our public commenters. I again do want to remember that everyone that has sent us emails along the way, that those have all been noted prior to today's meeting. And so I am going to be taking a short recess while we do wait for our student representative to join us because I do not want that student voice missing from the next portion of this conversation. So we will, we will rejoin, I'll say preliminarily, perhaps in 10 to 15 minutes, and then we'll continue the conversation. Thank you so much.
All right, before we get started, trustee Church, I just want to see if you're still with us. We have not yet come out of the recess. Okay, we have not yet come out of the recess. Just wanted to make sure we had trustee Church with us before we do. All right. All right, it is 2:47 PM on this Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. And this is the regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We will continue now with item 3.03. This is the discussion and possible action to select a superintendent of schools. And we welcome with us our student representative, Arabell Deason, who joins us. So colleagues, as we, as we continue through to this portion of deliberations, some things that I do want to recognize is that we, we've had five candidates present themselves to us into our community bravely and with vulnerability. And so my mom always taught me to not put people down on your way up. So if we can recognize the positives among our candidates, and that of course includes the people or the candidate that has really risen to the top with you. But I do want to be mindful of the contributions that all five of our finalists have made. And just as a reminder to our community, this is potentially the next point in a months-long process to find our next superintendent of schools, which involved many public meetings, surveys, town halls, forums, and many, many voices that brought us to this moment. And so as we continue on, the very first voice we need to hear from is our student representative, Arabell Deason, representing student voice.
Thank you so much, President Smith. Um, yeah, I just wanted to take a minute and talk about the role that us, Student Voice, had in this process. So we were actually able to have a group of students that met with each candidate individually. So that was really cool because we were able to like really talk to them about what we were concerned about and with no outside noise and just kind of have that one-on-one time. Um, I did want to note that it's so amazing that we have such awesome candidates to like choose from because it's, it's just, we're so fortunate. Um, but so that was our main thing of we really were able to sit down and talk with each of them. Um, and then I also, at our most recent meeting, talked to the students that were able to attend and kind of got their feedback on what, how they felt, what they felt was important. Um, and for us, it's really a superintendent that understands the importance of student voice because I've said this a million times, but since we're the students and we're the ones that are being affected by this decision, it's really important that we have a say in it in those decisions that are made. So, um, and honestly, I feel like a lot, the candidates really did have a good grasp on student voice and what that looks like and how we conduct it and how we want to move forward. And so that was really encouraging to see that, um, the candidates, they, they understood that. And so, yeah.
Thank you so much, Arabell. I appreciate that. And thanks for recounting how students were involved in the process. All right, colleagues, who would like to lead us off with their thoughts? Vice President Mayberry.
Okay, Madam President, thank you for that, by the way. Appreciate that. Um, yes, big decision. Uh, I, I have some notes. Um, so if I'm looking at my monitor, that's why I just want to make sure I don't, I don't overlook anything. I, I do want to preface my remarks by thanking, um, all of the candidates, particularly the five finalists who have really, uh, um, made a lot of sacrifices and, and commitment. And we appreciate, uh, I appreciate their desire to want to serve this district. Um, I don't know what's easier these days to campaign for school board or be a candidate for a superintendent. So, uh, my hat's off to all of them, truly. Um, to put yourself out there is, 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 takes a lot of courage. Uh, I want to thank Jacobson and McPherson for helping us during the last several weeks. It's been a pleasure working with you. Um, Dr. Cooper and Dr. Joel. Also want to acknowledge Katie Louise Ware and Case Shum and the entire HR team for the heavy lift that you did along with Michelle Anderson, her team, and Mr. Lombardo and, and your team, Office of General Counsel. Thank you again. Heavy lift. Couldn't have done this without all of you. And President Smith, I admire your, your leadership in keeping this project on track in a very committed manner, very methodical manner. Thank you. Um, so where I sit, you know, we've received lots of feedback and hundreds, some of it written, some of it verbal. Um, I have spent a lot of individual time with folks that have reached out, wanting to have a cup of coffee with me and share their, their perspective. Um, feedback was diverse. All of our candidates received very positive and stellar input. Um, also, uh, all of them received feedback that wasn't always positive. And there was a small amount of feedback that I received that was sort of none of the above and which I emphatically do not share, by the way. I, I know that, uh, one of these candidates will, will move forward. All of them have the knowledge, skills, and abilities. Uh, if I could take a little bit of Charles, Liz, and Troy, and Joe, and Paul, and kind of mix them all together, we'd have nearly the perfect candidate. But nobody's perfect. And the hard, cold reality is that we can only pick one. And, uh, I think we all know there's going to be some disappointments today, some relief, some, um, exuberance. But again, we can, we can only pick one. And if there's anything that I learned, uh, this time around in this superintendent search is that the superintendency is bigger than one person. And the position means a lot to a lot of people. So it's, it's my hope and prayer that whoever we select, that, um, that despite this being likely the pinnacle of their career, they'll always have a moment of self-reflection, uh, that they strengthen relationships internally, externally. Uh, and if they need to mend some relationships, if they do that as well, if they are an internal candidate, they provide steady compassionate and servant leadership to our employees and families. Um, of all the five candidates, Mr. Joe Ernst moved me the most. Uh, he's progressed in his career in this district, serving in the classroom as a teacher, uh, to an executive in our central office. I've, uh, heard most from him on how successful superintendents take the right people and put them in the right places. Uh, and it is in fact a role that cannot be operate, operate in a vacuum. Uh, Mr. Ernst shared his vision of strengthening our systems, both short-term, such as developing plans for lower class size, for underperforming schools that we've seen here internally, and long-term strategies for improving outcomes. And, uh, success requires a committed school community up to a district-wide commitment. And I appreciate his vision of a school system that is stronger today than it was yesterday and stronger tomorrow than it is today. I don't want to take away anything from any of the other candidates, particularly our, uh, other two internal candidates. Their commitment, their dedication to our, our communities, our family, our students is, is unsurpassed. But my choice is, uh, Mr. Joe Ernst. I've watched him communicate, interact, and lead with passion. He's authentic. Uh, he's authentic and he supports this team. His love for our students and his humility has strengthened my confidence that he can lead us into the next era of this district. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Um, I appreciate everything trustee Mayberry just, uh, shared. Um, I too, I think we all have had the interaction with our community. Um, Washoe County is, um, as much as it's big, it's still small. Um, there's a lot of individuals that contacted me personally. I'm sure we all experienced that. And I did meet with them in person, had that discussion. Um, I really want to reiterate what Mr. Berry, Mayberry stated, which is we don't need to turn off any of the light bulbs to identify the one that shines the brightest. And that's not my intent here. Um, I was impressed with each and every candidate. Um, I did have a, just from my experiences of unfortunately dealing with crises in the community and dealing with situations, I really wanted to feel something from the candidate, the compassion, the passion, the empathy, the enthusiasm, the positivity, um, with knowledge, excellence. And something that was very important to us, um, was experiencing the classroom, um, experience as a teacher, also as a principal. Um, that was very important, um, to me, um, with some administrative, executive leadership experience as well, of course. Um, I don't know how this is going to end up because we're just giving who our number one candidate is. So this is, who knows how it's going to end, if we're going to have a draw, what have you. But, uh, for me, um, in my experiences with individuals and hearing what the community wants, sometimes you hear, um, from a small population in a small area, a small moment of time, and you think that that's what the whole community wants, but it's not. Because we hear from everyone, whether it's in this room, outside of this room, we hear from, from everyone. And I'm going with what I heard from what people want out there in our community, parents, teachers, um, executives within our community, and also who impressed me the most. And for me, that was also Mr. Ernst. Um, I've seen, I've had the ability to actually see him volunteering in the community, which is something that's very dear to me. Anyone who dedicates their off-time to the community, it's one thing. You can talk whatever you want about any community, any organization, but if you're not putting out the sweat and equity out there, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want to hear it. I like to see people that do and not just talk. And I do appreciate, uh, the things that I've seen him involved with and seeing him out there in the community volunteering and helping kids. And I appreciate that. So he is my number one candidate. Thank you, Madam President.
Um, uh, Dr. Nicolet, uh, I know we have trustee Church, uh, with us and I want to make sure that we welcome his voice into the conversation since he's joining us virtually. I don't want him to have to wait till the end. So trustee Church, I'd like to defer to you next.
Well, uh, surprised I wasn't ready, but yeah, I'll go ahead. Um, so a very difficult decision. And I was going over the stakeholder feedback, uh, going over the requirements for the job. And the first thing, you know, that some of the speakers mentioned that struck me, and, and we can't ignore the elephant in the room, is that our scores have gone down pretty significantly. Um, even before COVID, we were going down. Post-COVID, we've continued to go down. All right, the things we haven't gone down, absenteeism from 25% to 31%. Uh, it's over 50% in some high schools. Graduation rate down from 84 to 81. Uh, only 11% of our kids are, are college-ready. So when I look at that, that does cause me some angst on selecting somebody that's in-house. And I'm not going to give my answers. I'm not going to give it away like the other two speakers did. But that does cause me angst that I've really got to consider, you know, we've gone down, but yet we're going to take, uh, people that are, that are in-house. I will say in terms of presentation, if I'm just grading a presentation, I thought Ms. Fagan knocked it out of the park. Um, and some of the feedback, um, quote, I'll quote this from this feedback. "Dr. Fagan is seen as bringing a fresh perspective to the district for approach to solving prob, problem-solving and openness to new ideas or values." So, uh, I thought she knocked it out of the park in that regard. Um, likewise, when I look at the in-house candidates, uh, we basically were looking for somebody with educational background. Dr. Lamarcus doesn't have that. I'm not saying I wouldn't support him, but he doesn't have that. His is in some kind of a philosophy PhD, not, uh, not educational related. I like the fact that, uh, Mr. Ernst came up through the ranks, uh, principal, teacher, principal, et cetera. I, I really do like that. Um, and, uh, a comment again, and I'm not saying yes or no, but when Mr. Parks presented and he gave his handout, he was the only one that gave a handout. Uh, and I read it, or, and listened to him. And he made comments about how long it's going to take to turn this thing around. And I read his handout, and quite frankly, I wasn't too impressed. It didn't have any there, there. I mean, it was written, he's a PhD, he hadn't written, uh, kind of at that level, uh, but it didn't, for me, as a, just, I just have two college degrees, bachelor's, and so shit. And it just didn't, it didn't tell me what we were going to do. So, uh, again, I'm open to ideas. I really am remaining, remaining open-minded. But I wanted to put some of those, uh, concerns on the table in case anybody else wants to discuss anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Nicolet.
Um, I, I too will withhold, uh, any last-minute identification because I want to hear all of my colleagues speak. Um, and I actually am wondering, is it appropriate to do public comment again from someone else who hasn't, hasn't spoken, who's maybe new in the room? Can we do that? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I just thought I would ask. I want, give you my variables, and I want to start with the journey. Um, we, um, began with a review of the letter that we received and was online, available to everyone, and the resume. And then the two personal videos, the short videos. So that's, that's how I started my journey in trying to, to put all the puzzle pieces together. Then each of the trustees had opportunity in one, two, or three, no more than that, to have meals with, with, at that point, the finalists. And then Edon, thank you, Edon, uh, gave a welcome reception. That was personal invitation. That was really a wonderful opportunity to talk in a comfortable appetizer kind of, um, atmosphere with also the spouses there. And we all agreed early on that, you know, the whole family comes with the superintendent. So that was a really nice opportunity. Then we had many, many forms, um, small forms with employees, uh, forums, F-O-R-U-M-S, with students, et cetera, many of those. And then, um, we had the Big Wooster Community Event. I personally stayed in the, the community portion of it in the small gym and, um, heard all five finalists. I wished I could have been everywhere, but I was able to watch them later via video, but it's not the same. Let's just face it. In-person was wonderful. So I, um, then there was the board interviews, the in-person, um, interviews. And then there were the opportunities that my colleagues have mentioned that were really the listen and learn opportunities that are just across the board. Emails, uh, bumping into people at the grocery store, students, um, gatherings that, um, have nothing to do with the school district, but you're at a gathering and someone taps you on the shoulder and wants to share. So I would like to tell you what I think. Wonderful opportunities. Um, many people reached out and I thank them for that. It, it's very, very helpful. We are a community trying to make a decision as a collective. Uh, and then there were the surveys. I, uh, the surveys were very, very telling. So the culmination of that for me is this, is that, you know, from the very beginning, I used one of our principals' statements, "We want an owner, not a renter." I've never wavered from that. Um, long-term commitment, i.e. long-term commitment. I am also looking for classroom and administrative experience. They are extremely important. I have heard that time and time again. We want someone who's been in the classroom. We want someone who's been an administrator and has, you know, really scaffolded their education and their experience. And then I look at the role of the superintendent in two ways, internally and externally. And they're both very different roles with very different, uh, of characteristics and expertise. They're extremely different. I will say that with all of the candidates, I'm a little concerned about the external leader in this particular case. In particular, those two candidates that are not from Nevada. Uh, Nevada's a very complex and, and how do we call it? A rural city? Or rural city? Uh, and, and we have those kinds of beautiful aspects about it. So I kind, I lean toward the three internals because the experience that a person gains from being in Washoe County School District is so valuable. And we're, we're moving into a legislative session. Um, we have many issues that we have to solve, and we have to solve them quickly. And I believe that someone internally is the person that is best capable to do that. Having said that, I also look for the superintendent who is going to be a strong leader and listener, and also a superintendent who knows when it's time to follows, follow others because they're, they're the leaders at the time and they're the experts. A good leader knows when to take turns, when to lead and when to follow and when to work together arm-in-arm. I look for that. So long story short, um, I'm going to continue to listen to my colleagues because I continue to learn. I have a leaning. I am not going to share that yet because as a woman, I'm pretty sure I am, uh, allowed the ability to change on a dime. So there you go so far.
Thank you, President Smith. So everything that my colleagues, the other trustees have said have very valuable and very true. I, I thought I actually hit the lottery when I was elected to serve as a trustee because we had this extra money coming in. They already got a superintendent dialed in. Dodge that bullet. Well, here we are. So it's, this is extremely difficult, but I really, I appreciate this experience because it's, it's made me really reflect on myself and to really hone my discernment skills. And I just, I want to first off say thank you to Dr. Cooper and Dr. Joel. Everything that has, uh, taken place during this process has really given us valuable insight. And for Ms. Katie Louise, Ms. Kate, Michelle, everyone else on the team that has had an effect on this process, thank you. Um, it has, it's really helped, it's really helped me a lot. Um, I really wanted someone, I kept saying, I want someone to love us. I understand what we want from a candidate, but I want to know what the candidate wants from us, and I want them to fall in love with us. Um, the other thing that's important to me is having a superintendent, maybe that's not ex, as polished as all of the other candidates or has all the right certificates and everything else, but someone who is going to grow with us as, um, as a district. And we are growing. We're growing, um, in our plans to make things better. And things are getting better. And so I think we need someone really positive at the helm and someone who does love this district. I appreciate all of the candidates. I can't imagine putting myself out there for this kind of scrutiny. It's, it's, it's got to be a pressure cooker 100 times over. And I thank all of them. I am going to say who I'm leaning towards because I, I, I feel it's important to, to take a stand on something like this. Um, I'm still going to listen to everyone else, but after weeks of looking at everything and I, I truly, truly care about all the candidates. But I think the person that I feel more comfortable with growing with in, in this process would be, um, Joe Ernst. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
I, I too want to thank, thank, give a round of thank yous to our firm, to our staff, to our students, to our community for their insight and participation in this. It is, it's really phenomenal. I must say, I, I did enjoy this process. I was pleased to see the community involvement. While I too enjoyed all my time with all the candidates, they all have impressive strengths, resumes, education. It's, it's not an easy decision, but I, I'm pretty candid about things, so I'll just be straightforward. While I hold everyone in the highest regards, I do believe that Joe Ernst would be outstanding superintendent. You know, talking about someone that loves us and grows, like my colleague, he's done that. He's very evident of coming up through the ranks, from the classroom. His experience in fiscal, which is something that, you know, not a lot of our, our leadership team has. He has that, you know, working with our ester funds, grants, things like that. And that's something that's very important and a skill that, you know, not everyone holds and has. I've also heard from a lot of our staff, you know, that he takes cares and takes cares of our staff, but he also holds them accountable. You know, I, I love our staff and everything, but there are times that, you know, people need to be held accountable, and then he's that type of individual. And I've been hearing that pretty much unanimous. I know when I met with him, you know, he spoke about safety as a priority to him. He knows that's a priority of this board, and he will continue to work with our school police and ensure that our schools are as safe as can be. He's a local resident, and I, and I have no doubt that his passionate commitment to our district will continue as our superintendent. That's the will for this board. So again, I want to thank all our candidates. It's not easy. It's definitely not easy. So that's pretty much my two cents.
Thank you. I am so impressed with this community. When we began this process months ago, so many people in this community that were maybe not involved a couple of years ago reached out. I have personally had hundreds of conversations with community members who wanted to be heard on what they value, the direction we should go in. And I want to say thank you so much to every single person, every student, every family member, every district team member that reached out to share their thoughts and that trusted me with the confidentiality of their opinion and their perspectives. I believe that this board and district have been served incredibly well by McPherson and Jacobson. So Dr. Walt Cooper, who's with us today, and Dr. Steve Joel, who's watching online. You have been brilliant in your navigation of this process. I believe that we have reached today in part because of your guidance and your strength. And so thank you so much. And then also to the other point of contacts within the district who put a considerable number of hours into this. And so of course, we have Katie Louise Weir, Kate Schum, our chief legal counsel, Neil Rimbardo, and then also Michelle Anderson, whose communications team put on so many of these events. And so I just want to say thank you so much because although we have seven votes here in this moment, we represent and have pulled in the voices of thousands between both of the surveys, the forums, the questions. This is not a decision just of seven voices. This is 7,000 people at least that we have heard from overall, over the course of this time, between the surveys and the associations and everyone who has a voice in this process. And so I want to say thank you to everyone. So with that said, I do want to acknowledge some of the strengths that I saw with all of our candidates. I was very pleased with the strength. There is advocacy for all of these candidates, folks. This is not a search where, you know, one single person was clearly a front runner. Everyone came into this with an equal opportunity. And there are people within this community advocating for all five of them, and that is good in this process. It shows that we have five solid candidates that can all do this job and that different people in the community see their value. And so for Charles McNulty, one of the things I appreciated the most was his whole child approach around data and environment. I really liked the way that he looked at children in their entirety and believed in their potential. Dr. Elizabeth Fagan, she is a proven superintendent right now, and she has the knowledge and the skills. I found her to be very, very compelling. She has a great supportive staff and the administrative strength, and those were things that really shined through. For Paul Lamarcas, I appreciate his advocacy around mental health awareness. He has a depth of experience with the legislature and also community partnerships. And for Dr. Troy Parks, you know, he has so many strong relationships within the district and the community. He builds very solid teams, which is very important among leaders. And then he has deep experience from the classroom on up as well. And then that brings me to the candidate. After a considerable amount of thought and consideration that I believe I support for our next superintendent of schools, and that is Joe Ernst. He has a history of classroom education. He is a proven transformative principal. He has creative approaches to education that balance both data and then also the heart of loving children. And overall, Mr. Ernst embodies commitment to me. Commitment to our kids, commitment to academic outcomes, and a commitment to our community. And I am excited about wherever this board goes. But as has been mentioned by my colleagues before, this is a role and a person that we will be growing with, and that is also our responsibility as a board of trustees as well. And I'm very excited for where this direction will take us. And so now, at this point, everyone has had the opportunity to speak. So I will go to whoever would like to go next. But everyone's had the opportunity to weigh in at this point.
Trustee Church can weigh in.
Sure. Feel free to weigh in, and then I'll go to Clerk Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Yeah, if it had been a, a three to three tie with Dr. Fagan and/or Joe Ernst, I'd be in a really tough spot. But this is a no-brainer. Joe came up through the ranks. He's so energetic in his speaking, so I have no problem at all endorsing him and voting for him under these circumstances. And I'm sure he's listening, and I just want to say, you know, I'm expecting results. In talking to him and having, you know, hearing him talk, I'm expecting our stats to do better and to do better soon. I know we can't turn it around overnight, but I'm trusting in him that he can do it on short of, so yeah, he'll have my support.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll make one last comment. And I'm on board with Joe Ernst, absolutely. And I do have this to say is that I have seen before that when you have three internal candidates, and one of them wins, and the other two are sad because they don't. Maybe they're relieved, but mostly they're sad. That I have an expectation, and I have a trust in this, but I want to say it, and I want to be very firm about it, that our team, our leadership team, must work together to move forward so that we can accomplish those tasks that are very immediate, that are short-term, midterm, and long-term. And, and I trust that our three internal candidates, because their soul and their heart and minds are in the right place, that they will find a way, because it's the right thing to do, to work together for the greater good.
Thank you, Madam President. Kind of gained the pulse of the board, so I will make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees selects Mr. Joseph Ernst as our next Superintendent of Schools for the Washington County School District.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Clerk Rodriguez, seconded by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no hands up or lights on for further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Just for the sake of good measure, I'm going to actually call for that vote again. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
I apologize. I was distracted.
Okay. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries seven to zero to offer this opportunity to Mr. Joseph Ernst. And I know that we have some members of our community that are interested in speaking with us, and so we're going to take a brief pause and also see if Mr. Ernst is available as well. Thank you.
Trustee Smith, Joe Ernst, currently Chief Continuous Improvement Officer, and excited about the next steps in our journey together. I first and foremost would like to thank each of you for your leadership throughout this transition. It's been instrumental. I want to make sure that I thank Dr. McNeil for her courageous leadership and her duty and sense of commitment to Washoe County School District. It's only one that I hope I can follow in those footsteps and appreciate that enduring commitment to this community. So I start there. I'm humbled by your faith in me as a leader, and I'm looking forward to doing this together because that's where the strength is. The strength is in doing things together. We have extremely talented people. We have wonderful students. We have a community that embraces us and is willing to help in every way. The opportunities in front of us are endless, and I really am looking forward to tapping into them together, to doing what's best for our students. So thank you very much for your faith and your commitment to me as a leader. I look forward to our partnering together going forward, and I know that Washoe County School District will continue to do great things for our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ernst. And with that, we close item 3.03. All right, everyone, so we're going to move on now to section four. These are our reports, and we'll start with our student representative report, item 4.01 from Arabell Deason.
Thank you, President Smith. So this week is a really big week for Student Voice because we have our Student Voice Conference on Friday. Dr. McNeil and President Smith will be speaking there, so we're super excited to have them. But this is really like a vital time for our Student Voice Councils because we all get to come together, and it's the only time of the year that all of the schools come together and we get to talk about what we've been doing in our Student Voice Councils and get excited about the next year. We're also doing an event this year where we spend time with our feeder middle schools. So we help them to kind of set them up to have a student voice in their school so that when they come to high school, they already know what it is and they're already ready to make a difference. So we're really excited for that. The council's actually meeting in about 20 minutes, and they're gonna, we're gonna do like a full run-through. So we're super excited to have an awesome conference, and that's what we've been really focusing on because this conference was completely student-designed. It's going to be completely student-led. Of course, our amazing advisors and coordinators helped us a lot, but we were able to really take the reins, and they gave us that, which was an awesome opportunity. So wish us luck. We're really hoping that it's awesome. It was really fun last year, so we hope it's great.
Thank you so much, Arabell, and thank you to all the students and you with your help in this process as well. All right, that closes item 4.01 and brings us to item 4.02, our board reports. And we'll go ahead and start with trustee Church, who's joining us virtually.
Thank you very much, yes. Hello, from sunny San Diego. And I admit, I'm down here mostly on pleasure. There's an annual music event that I try to never miss, and it actually included some high school kids that were performing. So I'm always a big advocate for music within the school district and what I call blues in the school because I'm with Blue Society. And I also got to catch some baseball, but it wasn't all pleasure. I had a five-hour meeting with a very senior leadership person who's involved in education down here, lots of experience. Gave me five hours of this time, and we talked about everything under the sun, from absenteeism to zoology and everything in between. So I hope to bring that back. And then I'm probably going to be diverting over to Vegas for another educational meeting next week. Want to remind people that, well, number one, I attended a number of JROTC events before I left town, and those are wonderful. I did attend to Monty Ranch, Commander Van Buren, paybacks, but he and I bantered quite a bit. He did have my Diet Dr. Pepper chilled to 34 degrees, my peanut M&amp;M's, no green. However, half of them were broken. They were M&amp;W's. And I just want to stand behind him 100% on the allegations about that mushroom soup trick that he pulled last time he was down here with the Navy, and I'll talk about that some other time, but paybacks. And we have a lot of stuff coming up in June. We have the graduations in mid-June. There's also a number of committees that are meeting in June, so I just wanted to put that out. The State Schools Commission, Ed Alliance, Purple Projects, and Student Attendants. So people that care about the district, there's going to be a week of a number of seminars for that. And I think that's all I've got in graduation, I think I mentioned. So I'll be back for the next meeting in person and appreciate the indulgence of allowing me to attend my Ponder Games. And I didn't think my vote was probably going to be a tiebreaker anyway, but I just appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. So I'll start off with attending the Home Visit Conference and Awards for the teachers that are making the home visits, reaching out to families, making that connection. Lovely speakers for the breakout workshops. I learned a lot. Trustee Vice President Mayberry was with me, and I just thoroughly enjoyed myself at Dodson Elementary School. Attended the prayer breakfast at The Atlantis with President Beth, Vice President Adam, Clerk Joe, fellow trustees Alex and Diane. It was wonderful. I mean, it was just such a positive, positive feeling to be in that room. Also attended the dinner and awards banquet for WEA at The Atlantis. Just a really fun time. I saw a girl that I went to high school with at Worcester, and that was really, really special to reconnect. School visits, I had numerous school visits. I always love those, just seeing how everything's going and what they've got going on in their schools. I read for the kindergarten classes at Sun Valley Elementary School, which just that, if you're having a down day and you go and read to those kiddos, I mean, it just lifts your spirits. Attended the Men Dive Art Show, and I won one of the auction items, which part of it was this beautiful cup with Starbucks gift certificate. But it's always really, really wonderful to see how talented these young students are with their art. It's just beautiful, especially since I can't even draw a stick figure. Attended Jerry Whitehead Elementary School, the book fair, three times because I have three sets of grandkids, and I wanted to have them go to the big school and be able to pick out books at the book fair. If you've never seen Paper Pie books, they are amazing. And I had a special treat from Principal Denise Paul, who did the cheer that they made up for their mantra, which is grow and shine. And the one set of grandkids that were there, they were thoroughly delighted with that. Staff Appreciation Week, I just want to thank every individual that works in this district in any aspect whatsoever. I think you're all amazing, and I really enjoyed being at Dilworth and having the, I don't know if it's Zucker or Zooker Donuts, but they were delicious. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, so we all did a lot the last two weeks. Visited numerous JROTC award nights. Visited the WEA Awards Night, which was very impressive to see teachers celebrate each other and their achievements. That was wonderful. We had multiple events as part of the superintendent search. Visited several schools to include Rise v. Cannon Pine Middle School, Roy Gam Elementary. And then we also visited the Employee Appreciation Event at Hug High School. But I really wanted to use most of my time to talk about the Pioneer Center because I'm a board member there, and I had several teachers ask me about, is there anything that the Pioneer Center would do with our school district? And I said, actually, there's a lot that they do with the school district. So I just want to share a little bit of that. So one of their programs is called Behind the Curtain Program, which began in 2022. Local high school performing arts students and educators have been invited to observe the load-in process for several of their Broadway tours. They're also provided with a short seminar about the Pioneer Center, the history and the production. During the load-in observation, they have the opportunity, this is our kids, they have the opportunity to ask questions of the touring crew members, including stage managers, company managers, head carpenters, lead audio, video techs, lighting specialists, and more. In 2023, the Pioneer Center expanded opportunities to include stage manager shadowing during performances. This is all for our students in the school district, as well as onstage performance workshops with creative team and cast from the Anastasia Production Broadway show. Since its inception, Behind the Curtain Program events have been attended by our students from the Monty Ranch, Galena, Incline Village, McQueen, North Valleys, Reed, Reno, Spanish Springs, and Worcester High Schools, as well as they also provide this for Carson City High School, Dayton-Fernley, Long Valley Charter in Portola, North Tahoe High School, Plumas Charter. The intent is to have, to give these kids opportunity in the performing arts. In fall of 2023, they expanded the program further with the robotics class from Hunter Lake Elementary, who visited the Pioneer Center to learn about moving lights and audio programming. We also have the Pioneer Center Youth Programs, the flagship educational outreach program that takes live performances of music, dance, and theater to elementary schools. Title I schools receive one program per year free of booking fees. So all you performing arts teachers, remember that. Washoe County Patron Count in 2022 to '23 was over 11,000. They've also provided internships. They worked with students who have special needs from Incline Village High School, where they interned with their facilities and concession staff for three work sessions. I have more information, but it's coming out. But needless to say, any teacher performing arts in the district, please email me. I have a lot more information to share, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a busy couple of weeks, hasn't it? Aside from all the superintendent stuff that we were doing, I represent our board during the emergency response, or correction, sorry, the emergency operations planning for our school district. A lot of different folks involved in that, from outside agencies and things like that. Also attended the Washoe Education Dinner Banquet. It's really fun to watch teachers cut loose and dance. It's nice to see them in that light. Also attended a couple of ROTC award ceremonies. Ran into Dr. Dai and our superintendent at Spanish Springs High School. Also attended, I was one of the last ones, but I got in. I got to see PBS in action in our classrooms, which is really phenomenal over at Amy Toll's. That was really cool to see. And yeah, it's awesome to partner with our outside organizations to bring them into our classrooms. Also visited a couple of our training halls during the open house event that they had. So it's impressive to see how our union trades the high level of education that goes into those folks. You know, I mean, they're pretty much completing their apprenticeship with an associate's degree. Very impressive. So yeah, that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, I had it as well. I'll try not to be redundant. I attended a lot of the same events all of you were at. It was good to see you out in the community, to include the JROTC event at Hug High. Spent a little time at Marcy Hurst as well, some schools outside my district. I submitted a picture late. Is it too late to get that up? If it's not, that's okay. That's all right. Don't worry about it. We'll do it next time. My apologies. Had a lot going on today. I think the highlight of the last few weeks for me was last week during Education Appreciation Month. It was good to see Superintendent McNeil at Washoe Inspire. Also spent some time at Dilworth with trustee Westlake, as well as Sky Ranch. And appreciated the Men Dive Art Auction as well. And I got my award, too, that I'm going to pick up on Thursday when I visit Men Dive. So it was a wonderful day. So that was a wonderful day. Again, great to see all of you at the prayer breakfast, the W E A Award Ceremony, and the Parent Teacher Conference, where Trustee Westlake and I were able to present and provide awards to some of our committed educators. Thank you.
It really is a, a pleasure to spend time with my colleagues at, at events. And just to be clear, we're not making decisions. We are just having fun and enjoying life together. I want to give a shout out to our volunteers in our schools, particularly Assistance League of Reno Sparks. They, in the last couple of weeks, have been at several schools giving away books, a book to every child in the elementary school. And it was so fun to hear the students, do I get to keep this? Yes, you get to keep this. Do I get to take this home? Yes, you get to. I don't have to leave it at school? So it's just absolutely wonderful. Attended the Foster Grandparents and Seniors in Service Luncheon to get today, and we honored them most recently, and, and they are just a wonderful, committed group of, of seasoned experts that any time I get to spend time with, it's, it's such a joy. I judged the Future Business Leaders of America, the Nevada Competition. One of the sessions that I was able to judge was business, business ethics. I will tell you that these kiddos, they took me to a new level in understanding, for example, AI and what business ethics in, in AI should, should look like. It was absolutely phenomenal. They, they created problems and then they solved them, artificial intelligence, AI. Again, attended R O T C. I attended, I serve on the Washoe Casa, excuse me, Washoe Casa Foundation Board and attended a human, child human trafficking training. The information was very insightful and very sad at the same time. Human trafficking of our children is a huge issue that we're still trying to understand. And I, I am proud to say that Washoe County School District Police Department has an officer who is part of HEAT and are very integral to identifying students that are in need and working together with other local agencies to protect our children. It's, it's a wonderful collaborative. Thank you, Washoe County School District Police Department. And then I serve along with Colleen, Trustee Westlake, on the Nevada Association of School Boards. All seventeen school districts are represented and proud to say that we are working on our legislative platform. I'm the Legislative Chair for NASB, and we're looking at safety in schools, universal free lunches, and we're also looking at capital funding, which is a huge issue in our rural, rural districts. I could go on so much, as wonderful things have happened. And six, five. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to have JJ pull up some photos here in a moment. So I, I did a quick pass through at the Foster Grandparents Luncheon, because I needed to get here a bit early today, but it was so nice to be in that room and to share our thanks on behalf of the school district with all of those grandparents that pour their love into our kids. I also met with the Roy Gom Elementary School Green Team. They are focused on advocacy around nutrition, single-use plastics, and the environment, and they are really bringing some strong ideas to the district that we're very excited about. This photo here is from the Nevada Interfaith Prayer Breakfast. You can see we had a very strong showing of trustees and also interim superintendent Dr. Kristin McNeil, and it was just a joyous moment of understanding and bringing people together and being reminded of the power and the promise that unite all of us. It was a really beautiful event. The next two photos is the Junior Achievement Hall of Fame Gala. We honored, as a community, junior achievement named former Board President Katie Simon Holland into their Hall of Fame. And the photo that you see here is the Principal of the Year Joel Pusshoto from Dilworth Middle School. We were so proud of him. Here he is giving his remarks. And in the next photo, there was a great coming together of community members here to celebrate. And so it was just a great opportunity to celebrate a wonderful community organization focused on financial literacy, which is really so important for all of us. The next photo here is from Career Day at a local elementary school. I was brought the role of School Board President, which the kids were very excited about. And so I really loved speaking to those six classes. So thank you so much for having me there with that. And then in advance of today, also visited several trade associations as far to, as part of the first ever Youth Apprenticeship Week that was recently held. I got to see some of the work being done by our electricians and our bricklayers and the roles that are available for our students after school. And then I will close with the significant and extensive community work that's happened in advance of this. Again, I know I've said thank you, but it's worth saying again, thank you to everybody who trusted me and my colleagues with your confidence and with your perspectives, because we can only do this work when we know what you're interested in and what it is you need. And I will close with a very sincere thank you to Dr. Kristin McNeil, the first and forever champion of our district and who has also been a big part of bringing us to this moment. We value you and we appreciate you more than you know. And so on that, I will close item four point zero two and go on to item four point zero three, our interim superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Smith. And speaking of President Smith, we were at Duncan Elementary School, I think a couple of weeks ago, celebrating a large check with the Educational Alliance. So I want to thank Educational Alliance for all of their support. But we got the students excited, and then I opened my mouth and said that we're going to award a pizza party to two classes. And then along comes President Smith, and now she's going to do an ice cream party for each one of those classrooms. So we're going to see where this goes. Hopefully, we're not going to get to giving them a brand-new car. School visits, I was able to get out to Clayton Middle School, McQueen High School, Westergaard, Elmcrest, Reno High School, Worcester, Corbett, Loder, Inspire, Hidden Valley Elementary, and Turning Point, all excellent, excellent school visits. All of you have spoken about J R O T C, and I, I don't want to repeat, but I do want to do a special thank you to our J R O T C instructors. The amount of time that our instructors put into these programs is absolutely amazing. Weekends, holidays, parades, obviously our cadets, and then also our J R O T C parents. You know, students have to get to those places, and so thank you to our parents as well for supporting that. We were able to hire a Chief of Human Resources, Mr. Doug Owen, will be starting with our school district on May twenty-eighth, so we are super excited to get our Chief of H R on board. We also presented along with CFO Mathers, and now your soon-to-be Superintendent, Mr. Ernst, as long, as well as our interim Chief H R Officer at the I F C Subcommittee on Educational Accountability, speaking to the board's commitment to educational opportunities for our students and what you all were doing with the additional funding. It was a great presentation. Attended the monthly NASS meeting, participated in our Educational Appreciation Week at events at Veterans, Pacolo, Innovations, and Diedricksons. I was invited to speak at Sparks Middle School as a principal, that, that was a principal during nine eleven. So I spoke to some eighth graders about what that was like and emergency practices that have been put into place since that time in our school district. Attended the J A Hall of Fame, which is amazing. And then this Friday, my son Ian is graduating from U N R with a degree in Electrical Engineering, and bless your heart, buddy, I am so very, very proud of you. And that is my report.
Thank you all so much. All right, that closes item four point zero three and section four in its entirety. And now we'll move on to item five, our closing items, and we'll open item five point zero one, public comment.
Roger Edwards.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Well, good afternoon, Roger Edwards for the record. You know, I listen to all of these events you guys attend, and I'm, I'm amazed. I'm just concerned that the rest of the world doesn't know how great Washoe County School District is. How, how do we end up at the bottom of the list? These, talk about just these groups that you guys went to, they were so wonderful, and I firmly believe you. What's happening here? Why, why are we getting these grades as a school district? It, it's got to, it's got to be important. I mean, I appreciate the fact that you get hugs and you win things, and you get a chance to mix with the kids. I think there's nothing better in the world than that. But you have to make the passing grade, and we're not. Is there nobody else who understands that? I mean, you know, I get a kick out of coming in here. I really do. Even if I do get a chance to wait till the very end of the program to make my comment, which tells the rest of the world how much my comment is worth. Nobody cares. It's at the end of the game. Nobody's got a chance to vote on anything that I say or take it into account for anything. Washoe County School District just elected a new superintendent who was in charge of continuing improvement in quality of education during a time when the quality of education in Washoe County was continually dropping. You can't make this stuff up. But, you know, it's, it's already a done deal, public comment now, it doesn't matter. But I do get a kick out when I come in here. Your statement on the front lobby says every child by face and name. You want to make everybody believe that what your stated position is to make these children successful in life. And I hear about the R O T C groups and I hear about all this stuff, and I still see failing grades everywhere. You know, I guess it's great you're going to be able to know these folks, you know, when they get out in the public, and they've had a, they've been a part of a failing operation, and they call you from Washoe County lockup on Parr Boulevard, ask for bail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Wesley Wood.
Welcome, Wesley.
Thank you. I'm just here to speak on, like, as a student from McQueen High School. I just want to make a comment on ensuring that we're keeping book bans away from our school libraries. I just want to point out, the Supreme Court case, Island Trees School District, Free Pico, I think it's a very important case and something that we need to respect. I know we see a lot of, we see some counties like Escambia County out in Florida right now, who are banning a lot of weird books to ban. Like, I, I saw they banned a dictionary for obscene words, as well as the biography of Malcolm X. I think that freedom of speech and First Amendment rights are very important to us as a, as a nation, which is why they're the first amendment out of the many. One thing I think is troubling is a lot of times the, the books that are being banned are, feature non-heterosexual characters or books that kind of serve to empower LGBTQ or queer readers. These kind of books have like an important place in our society today. They provide a, a voice to these younger queer students who are reading these books and checking them out from libraries, which is oftentimes the best place to do it. Sometimes they can't really do it at home, they don't have the money or. Like, going back to Island Trees, Free Pico, that is, the whole reasoning of that is we need to, we can't ban books for personal or moral reasons. We need to actually look at the content. We need to look at stuff like the Miller Test to see if it's like sexually explicit or obscene. And we see books like the, the book, The Perks of Being a Wallflower by Stephen Chabowski, I believe her name is, the fourth most challenged book in school libraries of last year. These kind of books have empowered me, a queer student, and made me more comfortable in my own skin, and I'm very grateful that I was given the opportunity to read these through the school library system. And banning these books is just a detriment to students like me. A lot of times it feels like the people who are in support of making these books want to make these choices for students as like a parent. And I think there's already a parental tool to ensure your kids aren't reading these kind of books. Like, I know you can request that your kid can't check out certain books, and I think it's unfair to extend that to the rest of students and parent everyone else's kids by banning these books. I just think it's important to keep in mind, and I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wesley. We always appreciate hearing from our students. Thank you for being with us.
Valerie Fianaca.
Welcome again, Ms. Fianaca.
Me again. I want to congratulate Mr. Ernst, if he's watching from anywhere, and state that he's a very decent human. I agree with all of your choice, and I'm looking forward to the future with him, and it's the best hundred dollars I ever lost. I did a protest in the past couple of weeks, and during that two-and-a-half-hour time on the street corner, I and several other community members were approached by many students, mostly juniors and seniors. And I got to say, that, I'm sorry, our student rep isn't here, but I was going to speak directly to her, that took a lot of bravery. That was a hard thing. These kids came up to us as we're protesting to start a conversation and request an interview. And I think that's, that's an astonishing thing, especially considering the age difference. These were like seventeen-year-old kids, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids. Two of them were going to be voting in the primary election, so they wanted information about what we were doing. And I thought that was incredible. They were smart, and they were inquiring, and I was impressed with the questions they asked. They had three questions. They asked of two different people that were protesting on the same corner. We didn't agree on this, on the topic, and yet we could still have a civil conversation about it. We're protesting, we're protesting the same thing, but we had opposing opinions about things, and the kids were shocked at that. I think they were very shocked at that. They were extremely insightful, and they gave me great hope for the future of our country. And that was one of their questions, is there hope for our country? And that made me really sad. Do you think that we've gone too far? And I said, I don't think so. I think that, I think our country is, is going to be fine. The friend I was with didn't think so. I think we're going to be fine, and it's because of people like the young people, the people. I said, if we can put our phones away, we can put our computers away, put our televisions away, and talk to each other face to face, we're not so different, and we aren't as divided as we think we are, and don't let anybody tell you that we are. Ask other people the same question and see what response you get. It'll tell you a lot about the person. It'll tell you about how far divided we are. So I was very impressed with that. And also, I want to give A A C T kudos. They deserve a lot of kudos. We've been looking for thirteen employees. We have a pretty big staff, and several of the floral design students from A A C T came in and applied for jobs with us. I don't know if they'll get those jobs. I don't know if they're qualified. We're going to find out. But kudos to them for sending them to the appropriate place to look for jobs after they've been through your programs. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fianaca.
Sandy Tibbet.
Welcome, Ms. Tibbet.
Hello, guys. Sandy Tibbet for the record. None of these are LGBTQ. None of them have gay sex in them, none of them. But they don't belong in the hands of children, and they don't belong in our school libraries. And they don't pass the Miller Test. America, this is about a young boy who is groomed and sexualized by his uncle. Every bookmark you see is a sexual content in it, dicks and tits, masturbation, Out of Darkness. This is in the high schools. Out of Darkness. I read from this book last time I come up here and was trespassing, kicked out. The passage that I read was about a little girl being molested by her stepfather. This is available at Pine Middle School. I have a granddaughter that's going to be in middle school next year. I don't want her to have access to any of this. This should disturb you that this is available. Would you want kids going home with this? Trustee Nicolette, would you be proud of that? Trustee Nicolette, would you be proud of that? I'm sure the parents would love it. Here, let me read a passage out of this book, also available at Pine Middle School. These are my words. I mean, not my words. "I'm going to marry you," he be saying. "Hurry up, nigger. Shut up." He mess up, dream talking and grunting. First he messed up my life fucking me. Then he messed up the fucking talking. I want to scream. Oh, shut up. Nigger, this is available in our middle schools. That doesn't bother you? Me reading this out loud to you bothers you, but not the fact that you can check this out in a school library? These books are in the public library. If these kids want it, they can go to the public library and get it. "Oh, shut up, nigger. How are you going to marry me and you as my daddy?" "I'm your daddy. Fucking me illegal."
Ms. Tibbet, that's your last warning.
"But I keep my mouth shut so the fucking don't turn into beating." "I start to feel good. Stop being..."
All right, it is 4:13 PM on Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. And this is the regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And we are still in and am continuing with item 5.01, Public Comment. JJ, who are we welcoming next?
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you, John Appolito, Protect Nevada Children. My comments are going to be much more calm. On the questionable books, I'm much more concerned with what students are doing on their district-issued laptops. And you guys all know this happens. We've had children in elementary school watching hardcore pornographic videos on Pornhub on their district-issued devices. The district takes no responsibility. They put out a statement that says kids aren't allowed to do that and they might get in trouble. They try to block the kids. The kids are better at figuring this stuff out than the adults. And I don't know if any are doing it right now. I know it was stopped a while back, but you can't, even if they're not on pornographic videos, they're watching a lot of stuff that's not appropriate for, even for adults. And someone was talking about child trafficking. It's, people that have been in the schools have talked about this. Kristin, you probably remember four, five, six, maybe seven years ago when a mom came in here and talked about her son who became addicted to the screens in elementary school. The worst thing, she said the worst thing she did was give her kid a screen. This was before you guys were giving them to everybody. So it must have been seven, eight, nine years ago. The kid first became addicted to the screens, then he became addicted to drugs. And within that time, I had given the Board, whoever was here then, an article about how screen addiction and drug addiction affects the same part of the brain, the same endorphins in the brain. And that's exactly what happened to this kid. Became addicted to drugs. He overdosed in high school, had to go out of state for treatment. And that's what you guys are doing to these kids. You see it all the time. You see it on the news. The screen time, the mental health issues, the issues all these girls are having. And you guys are putting 14-inch or 12-inch screens in their hand when some of them wouldn't even have a phone. You know, you can't say they all have phones because I kept my kids away from phones. It was the school who forced me to get a phone for my 15-year-old a year early. So you guys are part of the problem and you should be part of the solution. Protect Nevada Children. You can find 1,500 of us on Facebook. And if you want to see what Infinite Campus stores on your kid forever, go to protectnevadachildren.org. And there's also, I think, still a little information in there about SANE. Because SANE is the state database. They take all the worst stuff in Infinite Campus and they have it forever. And one of the retired superintendents at the state level says the federal government has access to SANE data. I've never been able to find it, but one of the superintendents in Nevada said they have access to that. You guys should all be concerned about that. I'd love to hear a discussion and I could use help at the legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. And from earlier today, I did inquire and the staff immediately got on the concern about any potential WCSD data with school city. And I can confirm from the district that there is no data breach related to WCSD data with that. Thank you. And thank you for raising it.
The Board received an email from Richard Peterson.
All right. Thank you so much. That closes item 5.01 and brings us to item 5.02, the next meeting of the Washoe County School District Regular Board of Trustees is May 28th, 2024. And item 503, adjournment at 4:17 PM. Thank you all so much.